Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for tuning in to this exciting TV broadcast. We'll see you tomorrow, the day after that, and the day after that, because that's the way we broadcast news, and that's the way you consume entertainment. Won't change anytime soon. For the MIT TV, I'm Tim Meyer.
Tim Meyer.
You, Tim Meyer.
I said, "Tim Meyer."
They said you were coming.
What they say true?
See for yourself.
What's this?
They call it a podcast studio.
The heck's a podcast studio?
It's a studio for podcasting. Superior sound visuals, allowing the viewer to either watch or listen for an intimate experience of long-form content.
Long-form content?
Without any restrictions from any cable or network provider, there's no telling how long it can be.
Is it affordable?
You have no idea.
What's he doing?
Found him here in the studio. Recent college graduate trying to start a podcast with his friends after debating the existence of God and women's sports.
How come I can't hear him?
Steven builds a spy house through the intergalactic satellite system. Also buy my merch with my special creator code.
How long before this becomes accessible?
It already has.
If you or someone you know is looking to start a podcast for business or personal use, look no further than the MIT TV. With hourly rates starting as low as 160 an hour, the MIT TV grants access to state-of-the-art podcast studio, allowing you to record perfect audio, amazing video for your audience. Contact the MIT TV today at mit.tvpodcast@gmail.com.
This job stinks.
Yo, this is Colosseum with the MIT TV. How we doing?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah.
How can I help you today?
Trying to watch the MIT TV.
That's awesome. Where you trying to watch the MIT TV at?
On my TV.
Perfect. Let me break it down for you. Yeah! Here at the MIT TV, we offer a whole slew of content, from community events, Romeo Community Schools, sports, and everyone's favorite, the Village of Romeo Board Meetings. Just find the YouTube app and in the search bar type @theMittTV. Once you find our channel, you can go to the Videos tab for our entire catalog of videos.
What if I'm trying to watch something live?
It is so easy, you have no idea. Just click the Live tab to find all previous and upcoming live streams.
I see that, but I'm trying to watch an archived Village of Romeo Board of Trustees meeting?
Whoa, alright, Board Meetings! For any and all archived meetings, select the Playlist tab. Not only will you find all meetings for the Village of Romeo organized by year, but you'll also find Romeo Community Schools and Romeo District Library. Our MIT TV page can also be accessed on your smartphone. Just download and open-
Can you hear me? You can't hear me. Good? Better? Okay. He says I'm good. Okay, at 7 o'clock, um, let us stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our Board of Trustees meeting for May 19th, 2025. Call the order at 7:00 PM. I feel like you, is this on?
I don't hear it.
They can't hear it, though.
Well, it's supposed to be muted. Mine's off, too.
It's probably on for the livestream.
There we go. Now we're good.
Check.
Thank you. Okay. I really don't want to yell all night. Um, okay. Board of Trustees meeting, May 19th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Clerk Lucero, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Bartholomew?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Fowler?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Parker?
Present.
Rosso?
Here.
President Poznanski?
Here.
We have a forum. Moving into our agenda, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion to approve. The agenda for May 19th, 2025 is presented. Support?
I have a motion by Parker, support, I think by Edwards.
All in favor, any discussion? Okay. All in favor of agenda as presented? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have none opposed. We have an agenda. Moving into our approval of the minutes for April 21st, 2025, do I have a motion?
The book. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Support?
Motion by Edwards, support by Bartholomew. Do we have any discussion?
Quite a bit. Do they have to be so long?
I mean, if we decided to not talk as much and have shorter meetings, I suppose they'd be less.
Fifty-five pages.
But no edits?
Um, I can't speak to the entire fifty-some-page packet, but I know on page nineteen, um, I'm, there's something attributed to me as a quote that I'm pretty sure I didn't say at the very top.
Okay. Do you have a correction, or you just know that it's incorrect?
That wasn't me who spoke.
Okay. And check on who spoke.
That was, that was, that's a Mark Clark quote. Sorry, I do apologize. I can, I can amend those. How are these, how are these formulated, Jamie? Are, are you putting all these in? Uh, as I spoke last time, uh, so we have a transcrib-, I have a transcriber, uh, an AI transcriber, and then I go back in my own time, and I listen to the, to the video and read the transcription and make sure that it is word-for-word. So, that is how it is done. The reason being, um, is again, because we have a number of issues here in the village that we don't know why things happened, um, the reason why they happened, what's, uh, surrounding the business that happened, so I feel it's important for posterity that it be completely, uh, and wholly represented. Yeah. So, I mean, just, just for clarification, if everyone voted and Shelley didn't make that correction, you guys are all saying that you went through and you verified that quote from Shelley, and any other thing that might be messed up, right? I, I don't, I can almost guarantee that maybe one person here went through and read this word-for-word, line-for-line, verified everything like Jamie just said he did with everything. I mean, it's just, to me, it's, it's crazy. Fifty-five minutes.
I feel we vote on our minutes in good faith. At the end of the day, whatever clerk took them, it's on them. Do we have any more edits? We have a motion to approve the minutes? Oh, sorry, we already have our motion and our second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
We have Rosso, Parker, and Fowler opposed. Okay. Moving into our bills. We have our council bills in the amount of $61,483.95, and then also $156,255.18. Do I have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills. Support?
We have a motion by Bartholomew, support by Edwards to pay the bills. Do we have discussion?
Um, I just have two questions. The graphics, LLC?
What, um, what run are you on?
Um, the very front page, line number two.
Of which item?
Vendor activity report.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's A-T-C-T-I-C-F-X.
Gotcha.
Okay, so it's, um, I know it's for the police cars. Is that one vehicle or more than one? Do we know?
I believe it was two, but I would have to verify with Chief.
Do you know, Jamie?
Well, I'm sorry, what page was it?
Oh, the very front of the vendor activity report.
I think it's-
Second line.
Second line down.
The single page.
Three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five.
Oh. Yeah, that, uh, that's for two.
Two, okay, thank you.
That would be for two.
Alright, and then just a few lines down, Dell Marketing, LP. Is that a marketing company that we're paying, or?
I don't know.
It's thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-eight?
I'll have to dig into that. I think that was the laptops and the, and the vehicles. Yeah, that would, that very well could be. Yeah. It likely is the, uh, the computer systems, the new computer systems are going into the vehicles.
We haven't gotten ours yet.
Yeah, we haven't gotten, we, I'm still waiting on our quote for Villagewide, but that sounds about right for that many computers, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to support, all in favor. Well, how about you call the roll clerk, please?
Parker?
Oh, and, okay. Thank you.
Yes. Rosso?
Yep.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Okay. We are in our special presentations. The DDA has their slot here. Okay, um, our wayfinding and attraction strategy. Currently, we're conducting meetings with U of M as well as other community stakeholders to research funding opportunities. A placeholder was established in the DDA budget for fifteen to twenty percent of funds that will need to get a grant for this. Um, as a reminder, this is the signage that's up on the DDA website, so if you want to see what that concept looks like, you can look there. Um, the DDA Executive Director is building out the Attraction Strategy Action Plan and conducting conversations with the Romeo High School to partner in executing on social media, videography deliverables for our Return to Romeo campaign. We're also reviewing proposals for our social media website, SEO contract, in order to increase our quality and overall success while reducing costs. Uh, the District, District 360 CRM, um, is scheduled for June, and we're working on importing all that data. Uh, Multimodal Streetscape Conceptual Planning Services. Um, this is where Giffords Webster team concluded its public engagement segment of our contract, resulting in over three hundred community responses to the survey. They are actively working with engineering and should have conceptual designs for us by July first. As a reminder, the primary focus of this project being the safety and walkability of downtown, taking into consideration cracked and heaving sidewalks, as well as the speed of downtown. Um, Spring Decor will go up on May 23rd. Our director has already gone through a pre-installation walkthrough, um, with Vans Valley. Uh, they discussed updating broken and missing brackets, bolts needing uniformity and heights of baskets, alleyways, and parking lot installation. Um, Velocity, the DDA, Village of Romeo, and Northern Macomb Regional Chamber have partnered with Velocity of Macomb County to deliver roadshow events covering small business marketing, grant funding for our local businesses. We held our second event on May 6th at the District Library. Over twenty businesses attended and gained valuable social media education. So far, we've had one DDA business awarded a $5,000 grant and another that has applied. Um, there are several others that are interested and will be making an application. The grants are for reimbursing equipment purchases, as well as services such as legal, accounting, and marketing. Um, the DDA also issued one business signage grant and received another application for grant funding. Um, and then New is a visionary leaders' circle. It's a group of DDA business owners have formed a business engagement group to focus on event organizations, as well as relationship building within the CBD. They've scheduled four events for the summer months that include a sidewalk sale, classic car night to be held on Wednesday nights, a chalk walk, as well as a Golden Girls Day Out. Uh, the group has also scheduled its first Business Owners Social, the Summer Swaree, at the Douglas House Barn to kick off the summer. And the DDA has also approved a sponsorship grant for Vintage Fest. Uh, lastly, we request, um, to think about some key data points that might be helpful for the board in approving projects. While we're still working with Giffords Webster and some of these other engineering firms, it would be helpful to know what those things are that you might be looking for. If you can think of anything, please email Kay, and we can start asking them for that data. Is there any question? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving into our correspondence. I know we had a couple emails come in. Clerk Lucero, you were gonna read them?
Yes. Alright, the first one I have is from Debbie Martone, 414 North Bailey Street. Dear Mr. Lucero, I'm writing to convey my support for the Romeo Police Department. There's an old adage, "You don't know what you have until it's gone." I feel the loss of the local police department will have a profound and negative effect on the village as a whole. I personally know the level of comfort of having police officers who are invested in this community close at hand. I cannot imagine having to wait for sheriff's deputies or state troopers to arrive in a dire situation. While I understand the line item on, on the budget is alarming when discussing such matters, I feel losing our dedicated police officers simply to erase that expense will result in a loss we could never recover. Clearly, they do not, they do not work in Romeo just for the pay. They are crucial, they are a crucial part of our community. Having local police officers who are aware of family situations, medical needs, et cetera, is an immeasurable asset. I am in full support of retaining our police department and adding a police millage if need be to keep our village safe and secure. The next, uh, correspondence was sent to this board, uh, May 13th, by Todd Tribovich, 208 Church Street. Hello, President Poznanski and Village Council members. Over the past few days, I have been approached and engaged in conversations with several community members and residents regarding the prospective idea of replacing the Romeo Police Department with the Macomb County Sheriff's Office for contracted public safety. Historically, I have mostly stayed away from opposing issues with this Village Council, but as a lifelong resident and supporter of this community, I couldn't be more opposed to this idea. While the understanding is that this is stemming from just a few members of the council, I wanted to share some of the concerns that are out there in regard to the area, or to the idea. By not having a police domicile, a force domiciled in the village, the standard of service that the Romeo Police Department has set is sure to drop. Being a village resident, there's a lot of value and comfort with being able to walk into the police department office at any time of day, any day of the week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and speak to a human without being routed through a switchboard. Also, the response time that the village residents concurrently expect is under two minutes. Unless there happens to be a, a Macomb County Sheriff's Officer on patrol in the area, how can that be expected to be maintained? Also, there is a lot of value in knowing your local police officers. Over the past year, the department has seen tremendous and much-needed overhaul to transform the antiquated system and equipment to not only protect village residents, but the police officers themselves that put their lives on the line every day to keep us safe. Thank you to Chief Roy for getting this accomplished since his hiring. Speaking of Chief Roy, as an organizer of a local annual event, Romeo Front Porch Music Festival, I have always been in contact with the previous chief over the past eight years to provide the details of the event. Until Chief Roy was hired, I have never had the level of engagement for public safety that he has shown. To give an example, I have always contacted the previous chief to notify of the date, time, and locations of the event, and that was the extent of our conversations. When I met with Chief Roy last spring, not only did he take great interest in the event, but also asked to walk the route with me so he could make sure that the Romeo Police Department could offer their full support and safety. I have a hard time believing we would get that level of support and genuine care if this idea was to become enacted. The costs of this prospective contract are another great concern. It's my understanding via a simple Google search that there are communities in Oakland County doing something similar, and the Oakland County Board of Commissioners voted to increase the rates for police services by nearly thirty-four percent. Those cost projections are only for over three years. What happens in years four through ten and beyond? How much more will they continue to rise? That is extremely concerning, especially since the investment has been put into modernizing the antiquated system the Romeo Police Department was operating under previously. And by modernizing, I mean simply getting to an acceptable level for overall safety of residents and the Romeo police officers themselves. Lastly, I understand this idea might just be some kind of flex by a few members of the Village Council, but I can't imagine being a Romeo police officer right now. Going to work every day with the sole purpose to keep people safe, getting paid some of the lowest wages in the industry, and doing it with a smile on their face, and offering a friendly wave whenever they drive by, only to have some members of Village Council wanting to replace you. That is the definition of a gut punch. In conclusion, the Romeo Police Department and the area residents simply deserve better than to have our local police force and public safety outsourced. If you want to hear a presentation from MCSO as a matter of due diligence, that is understandable, but as nearly a forty-eight-year resident of this community, I will ask that it stops there. Thank you.
Okay, we are into our public, our first public comment portion. Please step to the podium, at least say your name. Um, you have three minutes to speak on any topic you would like. Step to the podium.
Good evening to all. I'm, uh, Jim Wilton. I'm a retired, lifelong military guy. And I initiated this in Romeo, or in Richmond, a couple of years ago, in its, to recognize all of these people who lost their lives in war. I have records on everybody in Macomb County. I've got binders full of records. What we're doing, and if, if anybody wants to see one, and they're going through Richmond, they're up right now. Uh, we hang them from the light, the racks on the light poles in town. And the reason behind this whole thing is, uh, you know, pick out any name of somebody that died in war, you know what they look like? No. They might be on a stone in the cemetery. Nobody knows what they look like, and they gave their life for this country. I've developed rack cards, which I've handed out. I'm pressing this throughout the coun-, throughout the county. Uh, you're lucky enough to be my first shot at this to see, to see how I do. Here's another guy. We should see their faces. We put them up for about three weeks around Memorial Day. And then we take them down, and, and the effort for that, that drives that is, it's a shock. I had somebody stop me last year and say, "That's my cousin. Died in Vietnam." Nobody knew who he was. Nobody knew who, where he was buried. I've done all the research. I have a plan that I'll have printed up and probably deliver to the city. Questions? This is just a, a bad example, by the way. This isn't the one we printed. But the ones that, that I had printed are on the lamp poles in Richmond. Comments?
What's different about the ones you printed?
Well, they don't have this white, they, the first place I went didn't do the best job. And I communicated with some other folks, and they gave me a recommendation for a place in Port Huron, and that's where I went. So, i- in addition to anything I can help with, I got this printer in Port Huron that can do a great job.
Okay. Unfortunately, we're at our three minutes.
This is-
I think it's a wonderful idea. I think we'll take your, um, idea, pass on the info-
Great.
And we'll go from there.
Everybody got a pen? Macomb Area Fallen Heroes. It's on Facebook. I put them on by the date of their death.
Thank you, Mr. Wilton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Dave Varco. I live in Bruce Township. Apologize for that. But, um, in regards to the police discussion, that's what this is about. So, one of my comments about, um, we have Macomb County Sheriff's deputies service our area. Nine years ago, my alarm went off. I worked in Auburn Hills at the time. Forty-five minutes it took for them to get to my house. And then I was on the phone with the dispatcher the whole time, and they said, "What are you wearing, and what car do you drive?" Because if you get there before them, they want to know, so they don't shoot you. And I said, "Okay, this is what I'm doing." I, I beat them to my house, and I have a thirty-five-minute drive, uh, to get to my house. So, it took them forty-five minutes to get there. Then last year, there was somebody doing drugs in my neighborhood. They were passed out unconscious in front of my house. I called the police, the non-emergency number, told them what the situation was. Forty-five minutes later, somebody showed up, and they said, "This isn't even my area that I patrol." And I go, "Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it." This guy woke up and took off, you know, and they could have stopped them from doing that. So, my only suggestion to the Romeo Police Department is, maybe you guys could reach out to Bruce and to Washington, have them chip in a little bit of money to pay for the salaries, to pay for whatever else, maybe expand that circle radius that they patrol, and it might be able to make the budgets work a little bit better. You know, I know they're just stuck to Romeo, but literally, I'm five minutes outside of town. That would be great service to our community if we didn't have to wait for Macomb County Sheriff's Department. And then, um, along with that, let's see, what else? Oh, and then also, if you don't have a police presence in Romeo like we do, I think the crime's gonna go right up. It's gonna shoot through the roof, because they know, "Oh, I walk out, there's the police department, it's right there." It's very visible, they maintain their presence. If we don't have that, you know, I, I love Romeo, even though I'm just outside, it's gonna go, pss, right down the drain. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can- Next.
Nathan Bartholomew, 137 Pleasant Street. And, uh, we see I'm trustee. Um, I've been inundated with people telling me that they love this police department. I like this police department. Somebody had asked me once to mention, "Why do we have a police department? It's $2 million." Um, so I brought that up and, but no, I'm in, I'm all in support of keeping our police department. You guys do a great job.
Any more public comment?
Hello, Board. My name is Tom Stevens. Um, I'm a forty-five-year resident of Romeo. Uh, I've been on these, on this board. I've been on many other opportunities, and I'm putting my hand in the ring for the position on the DDA. And I'm asking the folks that know me, uh, I was on the DDA for a long time, years and years and years ago, when it was still a Main Street program, way back when. I feel I- I feel I am, and my wife are the owners of the Douglas House Barn, and we are very active with the community, as you've heard. I think I would be, I hate to use the word asset, but I know a lot about preparing things for events. I know a lot about who to find and who not to find, and I just hope you'd give me a consideration to be a new member on that board for the opening. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Danielle Lee, and I reside at 171 Tilson Street. I am a member of the DDA Board, but I am speaking today solely on my own behalf as a resident. I'm genuinely struggling to understand the direction and mindset of this board. Each meeting and budget workshop seems more perplexing than the last. While the board is supposed to act in a nonpartisan manner, it's increasingly evident that's not the case. Observers from other communities are even commenting on how the situation to be, appears to be deteriorating. Some trustees appear disengaged, crossing their arms, and unwilling to participate actively, while others justify their salaries by claiming they work hard. And yet, there's others that seem intent on nitpicking the budget without accepting the need for increased revenue. Recently, while subbing at an elementary school, it struck me that this board resembles an elementary bully, intimidating those that oppose them, offering false promises of collaboration, only to undermine others laters. Later, their behavior is unacceptable. It appears there's an attempt to obscure the truth, but those of us paying attention can see through it. The agenda to discuss removing our police department seems to be a strategy to distract and manipulate. When the time comes to vote on raising taxes, I fear the outcome will be predetermined based on whether the police are retained or cut. If the intention is genuinely to eliminate the police department to save money, I find that deeply disappointing and shameful. Continuing to collect salaries while dismissing factual data and canceling revenue sources due to a few complaints is unfair to our community. The idea of removing our police department under these circumstances is concerning. As public servants, your role should be to serve this community without financial compensation. It is a privilege to serve, not a right. I sincerely hope I'm wrong, and I urge you to reconsider your self-interest. Elmont trustees are paid zero dollars. City of Bloomfield Hills trustees are paid zero dollars. I know we don't want to compare ourselves to Rochester, but they're paid fifty-five dollars. Macomb County, the entire township, is paid two-hundred-and-ten dollars. I don't know how you can justify two-hundred dollars a meeting, especially when we're where we are. I really can't. And to consider getting rid of this, these great people, it's baffling to me, totally baffling. I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Now is the time to speak, otherwise, we will conduct our business. You will have time at the end for one follow-up public comment if you would like. Okay.
Are you speaking?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is Eric Thorson. I live on Croswell Street. Been a resident of Romeo for approximately ten years now, and I'm here to voice my support of the police department. I've been coming to the meetings now for the last six or eight years, and I've kind of heard that rumor going on, and that's one of the reasons, excuse me, that I come to the meetings. But I just want to say, in the time that I've been here, I've never had to call the police department, and I consider that a huge asset, the fact that they're there every night patrolling. And, I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit emotional and having a hard time public speaking, but I just want to support my, voice my support for the police department and hope that we can continue that. Thank you.
Okay, once again. Okay, hearing done. I feel like this is off again. Just me. There we go. Guess it's got to be right there. We will move on from public comments. Let's move into our officer reports. We'll start with our trustees. Let's start down there with you, Trustee Bartholomew.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Trustee Edwards.
Nothing at this time.
Trustee Bissou. Trustee Parker.
Nothing for trustee.
Trustee Care. Trustee Fowler.
Yes. Just for clarification purposes, I don't think this board was looking to get rid of the police department. I bought up about the dispatch, and that's why we want to invite the chief here regarding the dispatch services only, not getting rid of this police department. So, whatever rumors went around, and it went around wrong, just wanted to clarify that. I know Trustee Bartholomew, thank you for saying that, Bart, did mention the word, but I'm the one to mention as far as the dispatch services. And to have the sheriff come by and give a presentation, nothing to do with getting rid of the police department, so I don't know where the rumors came from or how it got distorted, but just wanted to clear that up.
Okay, moving into our officer reports. Do you have any, Trustee Parker for ex officio, for planning?
Yeah, the main thing on the agenda, we discussed the special land use for the Gray House becoming a bed and breakfast. Things were tossed back and forth, was left at tabled for the time being, and we will pick that back up at the next month's meeting. That was about it.
Chief.
Just two things to report on. The Clemis install has begun to happen. Cars four and five now have Clemis equipment. Clemis platform has been loaded on the dispatch and station computers, and the Clemis staff has been to Romeo to train everyone. As I've told you before, this is the last foundational piece. Everything that we have done has been spread-shitted out and be scheduled to be replaced and updated when it reaches end of life. There won't be any kicking the can down the road. The expense of this last year will never happen again. It should be noted that Clemis is completely accreditation compliant, and we are now in position to start having the accreditation conversation with the MACP. Two new vehicles arrived this week. Car two will be retired from patrol and repurposed as the SRO vehicle. Car three and the current SRO vehicle with mileage well into the six figures and needing monthly repairs will be retired and likely auctioned. Any questions?
Yeah, well, one question. Could you clarify what the civilian rules are for the walkways that are at the north end and the south end of town?
At the north end of the south end?
You're talking about the pedestrian?
The pedestrian crosswalks there. I've got people that, I've had people talk to me about walking across there, and cars don't stop for them.
They should not. Go ahead.
Talking about the pavers that went in?
The painted paver.
The painted areas.
Washington and Newbury.
It is not...
Washington and Newbury.
It is not yield to pedestrian.
Right.
That is not a state law. Go ahead, Chief.
Oftentimes, people do, and they wave pedestrians out, but it's...
It's dangerous.
It is a hazard. It's a danger.
Yeah, because it gives, I think, the wrong idea.
I would really like to even cut those big yellow signs down that even point to the crosswalks because I feel those give the false narrative, but I'm unsure if the county just wants the signs taken down.
The same thing for the bike trail, right?
Yes. Do you know what? If you're on the bike trail and you go to cross, it says stop, and it's pointing at you as the bike rider. Yeah. It is, those vehicles, it is more dangerous for that vehicle to stop in backup traffic, and you're unsure if the other one's coming the other way. You're going to end up with rear ends or someone getting hit, and it is dangerous. It is not yield to pedestrian.
But unfortunately, it's a county road, and any additional signage or road markings would have to come from them.
Okay, just wanted to clarify because I've had people talk to me about it.
No, thank you.
I guess I made some assumptions, and they were making some assumptions.
I feel those signs just give a...
False.
A false narrative there with the...
Okay.
They're just, they're just pointing out that you can cross there. Doesn't mean that the vehicle's going to stop. And even if it was yield to pedestrian, pay attention to the vehicle.
Yeah.
For pedestrians out of the right of way, but...
Okay. The treasurer, you can see in your report, did the grand total. We're going to break it down now that we're, I'm going to ask her in the future to try and break it down for the budget year. This is the grand total, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. We started this back in December of twenty-three. So, I'm going to, going forward, see if we can't get it for the budget year because a lot of it's spent already or not in the current budget. Clerk Lucero, do you have a report?
Two. Just to clarify, because I said that posterity is, I'm big on posterity, making sure that the, the record is reflected. I did not put together meeting minutes for the workshop, although I record every single meeting. And when a certain trustee asked about also looking into overall coverage, and I explained why we would not want to look into overall coverage because of a number of issues that were also cited in Mr. Tribovich's letter, as well as I've seen multiple people cite the same statistics online, I was told that they were done and that I am doing nothing more than rambling. So, I'd like for that to be on the record. Going into the cemetery, I received some documents from Romeo Community Schools from Mr. Robinson. I received blueprints from nineteen-fifty-six all the way to nineteen-ninety-two. I know he was thinking these might help and might stop us from asking questions about the cemetery. Unfortunately, they raise even more questions because, as I had stated before, sometime between seventy-three and eighty-four, they annexed a portion of the property and paved over it. And in these, in nineteen-ninety-two, it still shows there's no parking lot on our property still, which, so it raised a little bit more questions. I asked him for more documents. He also gave me stuff out of, you know, kind of how we have binders of stuff in the office, and they're all folded up neatly, and the president and I looked at that and said, wait a minute, that's probably from a binder. There's more information. We're going to need that, more information. So, we still don't have any supporting documents for the easement, and if I'm looking at the nineteen-fifty-six document, which shows the school as the original orchard, I'm thinking more than likely that easement is not the easement for the retention pond. It's likely the easement for the water main. It sits in line with everything of all the documents that I found, so I actually think that's what we're looking at. And then water from that new development is a major issue. The fact that they've built up that football field probably twenty, thirty feet taller, it is now jettisoning water into the cemetery, not only into the retention pond area, but into the overall cemetery itself. This most recent rainfall, it flooded the area south of the retention pond. So, that's a, that's a huge problem. Moving on to the village offices, it wasn't put on this because I just, I didn't have anything to update you guys with the concerns of OSHA and stuff. I did report to OSHA to let them know that we have begun working on the issues that we identified. They were more than thrilled with that. Matter of fact, Mr. Brian Mitten came out on Friday, May second, did a large amount of work. There's still some things we need to, to do there, and we're just kind of waiting on his schedule for him to come back out, finish up the rest of the work. We have chemical lists from all of our departments, which is one of the things OSHA wanted us to have. And I'm in contact with our lead building official, Mr. Bob Marito, to get that wall built in the records retention room so that we can have a mechanical room itself. Otherwise, we just don't have anywhere to put documents because they want them to be twenty feet away, and we just, we don't have twenty feet up there to move anything away. Also, I'm going to report the week of June second through sixth, the building department will be closed for professional development. We will schedule inspections during that week, but we will not be processing new permits. So, if anybody's listening, any builders, get your permits in prior to that week or wait till after that week. And then lastly, and this is a big problem, this is a plea to the community. Be courteous, please. I know oftentimes when you have issues, you come in, emotions are running high, and it's very easy to take it out on the person in front of you. Over the last few months, with a number of issues in this village, the, the staff has been berated, and quite frankly, that is not their job. I have taken a brunt of it. On Friday, it was the culmination of just everything. I had someone come in screaming. I asked them a number of times to please walk it down. But the, the staff gets belittled on phone calls, berated, you name it. And if you cannot conduct yourself in a professional manner, you will be asked to leave the village office. If that's not enough, then we will ask one of our officers to escort you from the building. My job is to protect the staff, to protect my staff, and not allow for a hostile work environment, and I will not allow for one. I will not allow for someone to scream in one of our people's face, point a, a rolled-up newspaper right into their face. That is unprofessional, and that can't be allowed to exist. And on top of that, so with all of the tech stuff I'm looking at, I am looking at possibly getting a camera that will cover the front desk and the lobby area as well, just to both protect our people and protect the person that's on the other side. Because I feel it's, it's getting to a point that it's just, it can't be allowed to continue. It just can't. And that is my, that's my report.
Okay. Few things here. I wanted to give a thank you to Andrew Hale, recently resigned from our zoning board of appeals. Just wanted to thank him for his dedication and time over the years and wish them well in their new home. Another item, the SEMCOG planning grant application is back out. We recently used the other one for our CIP. Back out, so I'm trying for another one, forty-five thousand, the full ask. It would require, just so we're aware, again, an eighteen-point-fifteen percent match, whereas if it's the full forty-five, we would be responsible for just over, just under eighty-two-hundred dollars. The focus of this grant would be a village-wide sidewalk inventory assessment. This would allow us to understand the condition of our sidewalks, leading to an intentional maintenance and budget plan. I would go into a program like a G I S, map it all out. We could put parameters to it, what is severe, you know, grade them, and take an intentional direction there in the sidewalks. A few things just to note, our Vintage Fest is coming up June twenty-first. This will be held ten AM to six PM. If you would like more information for that, please check out romeovintagefest.com. I know that we'll still have our vintage car show, kids' activities, similar fun things, music and such. And thank you to the Romeo Rotary for hosting that, taking the lead on that one. We have our Memorial Day Parade coming up a week from today, Monday, May twenty-sixth. This will be at ten AM. The parade starts at the Village Park and will walk west up St. Clair to the cemetery. And we wanted to take a minute to thank Congresswoman Lisa McLean for honoring us and being our keynote speaker that day. And then for our Peach Queen, wanted to say thank you to Joanna for representing us in twenty-twenty-four, whether it was the Samaritan House Fashion Show or reading to kids that have all kindergartners during Reading Month. She did everything, and she did it with joy and grace, and she represented Romeo very well and has left big shoes to fill. And wanted to congratulate Olivia Lynn, who is our twenty-twenty-five Peach Queen. Let's see, a budget meeting, May twenty-eighth, coming up. Also, just for the council on this one, water rate information, water sewer rate information has come in. He could not make this meeting, so I have added to that special agenda. We will get a presentation. We'll be able to thoroughly ask questions and such. But just as a heads up, pretty much just like everything else, it doesn't look pretty. Our tree board, congratulations on the village tree assessment with the grant. Finishing up there, thank you to Betty and George Smith, who took the time to really write this grant and get that in. Finishing up there, thank you to Betty and George Smith, who took the time to really write this grant and get that in. Similar to the sidewalk, we're gonna have a tree assessment of the whole village, noting what trees are actually village trees, what condition they are in, which ones need to come down immediately, and putting a plan in place, and then continuing that each year, noting the trees that needed attention. And we can then take our funds and use them intentionally instead of reactively to the trees that need maintenance or need to come down at that time. Wreckling Park, I was able to meet with the Parks and Rec Commission on site last week, and Luke from Macomb County came out. Our intent there was, we need some plans, official plans moving forward. Macomb County, or Green Macomb can't really help with that. They have their basic drawing, but we need engineered drawings. So we need a little bit of money. So we are reaching out to Parks and Rec Commission to say, hey, this is an actual park. This is real green space. Please help us out. Told them the intention, the things that we've done, held an onsite meeting with the public. We've had a survey. Overarching intention there is something low-key, low-maintenance, you know, maybe a meandering, more of a memorial-type park. They seem to be on board with that. We're gonna keep working on those next steps to come up with a real ask for the Parks and Rec Commission. Before we put all that stuff together and took our time, we wanted to know if they were even gonna support us. So it seems like they are, so we'll take steps there. And then lastly, if you've been paying attention over the last year, we have, we received over three hundred thousand dollars in grant money from Eagle to do lead line verifications within the village. Before you worry, to date, we do not have any noted, but we must verify them. And in doing that, we're taking the next steps right now. I just received this email literally today. They're gonna be preparing to go out onsite onto properties. We're gonna start off, our first batch will be a hundred and eighty homes. If it is your home, you will receive something in the mail, and only you of the hundred and eighty at this time. So if your neighbor didn't get it, they're not part of it. If you receive one in a future date at that time, then it will be your home. We're gonna be doing these in batches. The company that we've hired, this is how they do it. So please be looking for that information. They'll be on your property. The information you get will basically explain what will be happening. They will be drilling down, it's like a six-inch hole, suck out the dirt, look and verify and go, yep, that's not lead, take a picture of it, pinpoint it in the program, fill the dirt back in. If you have any other questions, program's gonna be going on in a year from now. Say that circle settles. They're gonna be coming back out with restoration, throw some more dirt on it, some grass, but always communicate if you need, you know, to give us your address, say that something's happened. That is it for my president report here. Moving into our sewer, our subcommittee reports. Bruce Sewer.
We didn't meet.
No. And I, have you gotten the information?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually had a conversation with-
James handed it out.
Yeah.
I wasn't there. He emailed it to me. Me and Jamie had a conversation today. I think the three of us should probably set a meeting and discuss the findings and do something for next month, so we can actually move forward or do what we gotta do.
Do you have, you wanna set it down?
Jamie?
I'm good just about every week, except for that first week.
Of June?
Of June, yeah, so...
You're talking day or evening?
I'm, I'm pretty fluid there.
First, the first week of June, I'm, I'm gonna be gone, so...
So second week of June?
Second week of June.
I can do evening.
Evenings?
Yeah.
Usually in the middle of the, the week, I'm, I'm better, so Tuesday, Wednesday-ish. So the tenth, the tenth I have open right now?
That's fine, tenth.
Okay.
All right.
So say the tenth at six-thirty?
Six-thirty's fine, yeah.
Yep.
At the village hall or here?
Village hall.
Okay.
Okay, fabulous. I did have a meeting over at Bruce Township this month and was asked, where are we at? I said, we'll be in touch. They didn't like that comment. Our ethics subcommittee, we also did not meet. I haven't had any communication. I think we were waiting until budget to kind of, so that's where we're at with that. Okay, moving into our unfinished business, we have our draft budget for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. This was in here. This is our last time. If there was something you saw, this is the cleaned up full version. Otherwise, we were meeting next Wednesday. Did anybody have anything? Speak now.
Department two-seven-six cemetery, I thought we decided to remove the skidster.
Can you give me a page number up at the top?
Page number twelve. Probably decided as a board to remove the skidster based on the cemetery board saying they didn't need it, and then we didn't need to make that purchase at this time.
I wanna say you guys said that, since it's just a line item that sits there no matter what, they don't have separate funds, that that money was just gonna sit there as is as part of their overall?
Well, we could take up the title and just call it capital.
Yeah.
Capital improvement.
I think that was the original agreement. I'd have to go back.
Yes.
Okay, any other items? I do just wanna double-check with everybody. I know there was a bit of contention with the DPW parking lot. That is in here. If that is not what the board would like, please speak now. If over the next week, before the meeting next Wednesday, you do find something, please email. Let's talk about it before the meeting, so we don't get there with an intention to pass the budget and not pass the budget. Okay, moving into our paid parking contract with the DDA. I did pass this on to Mr. Clark. Spoke a bit about it. I had in here for you the letter from their lawyer, and then as a reminder what the contract is. Let me just read the, the letter from the DDA so that we all know. This is in regards to termination of agreement due to discontinuation of paid parking program downtown, in the Romeo Downtown Development Authority. Dear members of the Village Board of Trustees, on behalf of the Romeo Downtown Development Authority, this letter serves to formally notify the Village of Romeo that the DDA is terminating the service agreement between the DDA and the Village of Romeo related to the administration and enforcement of the paid parking program effective immediately. This action follows the Village Board's recent vote to end the enforcement of the paid parking initiative, which fundamentally nullifies the purpose of the agreement and renders continued performance infeasible. As a direct result of the Board's decision, the DDA has incurred unreimbursed expenses totaling twenty-one hundred dollars, which include operational, administrative, and technical costs associated with supporting the parking enforcement program. In addition, the DDA entered into a two-year cellular service agreement at a cost of forty dollars a month, which was required to operate the handheld devices used to process parking reservations and enforcement data. The DDA respectfully requests the village's assistance in either facilitating early termination of this contract or providing reimbursement for the remaining financial obligation. The DDA is currently in possession of nine hundred and forty dollars in collective parking reservation fees. It is proposed that these fees be applied as an offset against the aforementioned expenses, thereby reducing the total amount due from the village to one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. We respectfully request that the village confirm its agreement, too. Number one, acknowledge termination of the agreement. Number two, reimburse the net balance of one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. And number three, cooperate in resolving or assuming the cellular contract obligation. The DDA looks forward to an amicable resolution and is prepared to provide supporting documentation for all incurred costs and collection fees. Please respond within ten days to confirm acceptance of this proposal or to arrange further discussion. You are authorized to respond to this office in writing only regarding this matter. So at that time, I did speak with Mark, asked Mark to reach out in writing to their lawyer and say that we were bringing it before the board for discussion. So this is where we're at.
I have no problem with reimbursing them with, with, with half the balance, the eleven sixty. And I'd be fine with cooperating and helping them resolve that obligation if that's the cheapest and best thing for them to do. Yeah, I think, I think that's more than fair.
What's this, assuming the cellular contract obligation?
They have a forty dollar per month agreement with the vendor for service to try the iPads.
So that's paid up, eleven hundred bucks that goes there?
I think they included that in the eleven sixty.
No, I feel like those are two separate items.
I got that here as a separate, yeah.
Correct.
Oh, that's the third point then, or assuming the contract obligation.
I agree in paying the expenses of the eleven sixty. When it comes to the contract, I'm unsure, Mark might be able to speak better to it, that we could negotiate or do anything for them in a contract that they're in.
We're not party to it, correct?
Yeah, if they were to take steps and come back similar to this amount of money and with an actual action item for us, I believe at that point, we would be able to do something.
Yes, I don't think it would be appropriate legally for the village to undertake to resolve a contract with which, to which it's not a party. That I don't think is well-advised. On the other hand, I don't, at least my advice would be to not say or take a position yet until, on the cellular expense, until you know what that is gonna be. Is the cellular service provider gonna want payment in full, and then maybe you negotiate that with the DDA? But I, I think you need more information before you can take a position with respect to the cellular contract.
That's fair.
Did we know there was going to be a cellular contract? Because I didn't see it in this agreement. So were we informed and just...
I believe it. There were times it was presented with the tablets that they purchased. There was, it was spoken about.
Tablets, but they say a two-year cellular agreement?
I can't recall.
I don't recall either.
It might have been in that service agreement you guys got last month. I can, I can try to see if I can find it and see if it was in there.
I guess my question being, were we aware that they were signing a two-year agreement and we sanctioned it, is my question. It doesn't sound like it.
Do you need a motion to pay the eleven sixty?
Yeah, I would at least request that.
I'll make a motion to pay the one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars to reimburse the remaining balance.
Do we have a motion by Parker?
Support.
Support by Care, all in favor of paying the eleven? All right, Clerk Lucero would like roll call if we could, please.
Parker? Yes. Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Rossa?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
President Poszynski?
Yes. So that takes care of number two. Number one, they did ask us to acknowledge the termination of the agreement.
That's referring to the cost-sharing agreement?
Well, yes, the, the agreement that I have in your packet with you.
I'll make a motion.
Well, as I said, the motion that you made, Nolan Wright, last month or when we terminated, did we acknowledge it then? Did we say to set out?
Not the specific, yeah.
No, no, we just, we acknowledged the enforcement of the parking. We never acknowledged the contract.
I would weigh on Mark's opinion on that.
Well, I don't think you have to respond to that, but if you're not intending to go forward with the contract, the DDA, at least through its lawyer, is telling you that they are terminating the contract instead of the village telling the DDA legally it's terminating the contract. So I think you can accept the termination in doing so, and if you want me to respond, I will, to the, to the DDA's lawyer. But you can accept the termination, but not accept or acknowledge any responsibility beyond that which you've undertaken tonight to pay the eleven sixty.
Yeah.
That's fine.
If you can acknowledge that, Mark?
I can.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the third one is cooperate in resolving or assuming the cellular contract obligation. From our conversation, it seems that we would like a bit more information.
And I can say that in the same letter, that the village council's willing to discuss with the DDA the resolution of the cellular contract. We just need more information.
Okay.
I agree.
Great.
Thank you, Mark. Moving into the next item, bond funds captured. Clerk Lucero?
Yeah, so finally got ahold of MML, provided you guys the email. We're getting sixteen thousand. That's for the issue with the Sinta San Aramark. Now, the, the other large amount that was on, that was a claim against her bond was for the, the...
Phone?
No, no, it wasn't phone. It was the fire contract. They, they claimed that that was administrative oversight. I said I could see if you're saying one time, this happened multiple times. So now they're looking into that.
In the emails, as I was going through them, we never knew that they missed the first time. So that is how we know that it's a second.
So hopefully I can report more paid-out claims next month. We'll see what goes on there.
Moving into our DPW purchase. We did have the three quotes here.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Just for point of reference, I'm reading, I had Tim send me a few notes. Our current power washer is from the old DPW. It is thirty years old. That's where Wreckling Park is right now. It's approximately thirty-five hundred dollars to fix, as long as it doesn't need anything else. So that is why we are looking at it. It's the time of year. We need this, this equipment. It's not like something that it can wait.
Well, I see DPW has chosen to go with the low bidder, so I guess I'll make a, a motion to go ahead and purchase the power washer from Gilbert Sales and Service in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Support.
We have a motion by Edwards, support by Care. All in favor? Do we have any opposed? Oh, do you have discussion?
One opposed.
Well, no, I, yeah, I did have, was there gonna be any installation cost on top of this? Because I don't think, this isn't just your standard plug-and-play, right? So we'd have to have some additional... Oh, this one's too, okay. We don't know that. All right, that's up. Thank you.
Okay, we'll try again. All in favor? Any opposed?
One.
We have one opposed. Mr. Fowler's gonna get a hose and a toothbrush.
Hey, I'm your rent officer.
Okay, moving into our wastewater treatment purchase. That was the picture that was brought in and left at your table. I did end up getting that so that they could show you what exactly it looks like. This does not have three quotes because it is a one...
A specialty item.
Yeah.
Always with specialty stuff, Al.
Yeah, I know.
I did, though, give you a snippet there from our purchasing policy. Any questions for Al?
This is a bearing for an RBC. It's about eight inches wide for a four-inch shaft, and it comes with the locking collar. And these RBCs are forty years old, and you're only gonna get them from one place.
Do you deliberately find the worst pitches to take?
Yeah, yeah. Bearing's that big. And I've got a picture of the RBCs, what they actually look like, where, where it comes from. You've seen these in our yard before. There's fifteen of them, so that's thirty bearings. So if, if we don't change it, it'll tear up the shaft, and that's about a twenty thousand dollar repair.
So you're saying there's thirty of these?
Yes.
In there. And do we know the life expectancy on the rest of them?
We grease them twice a year, and we do, we, we, you know, we call for once. We grease them twice a year. and still going, but, yeah, so.
So is this something we should look at moving forward, so many a year?
No, um, these are, these are things that we need to do as, as we come across them. I, I can almost guarantee you, next time we refurbish the wastewater plant, we will be getting rid of all those RBCs, because we can't get parts for them very far, very easily.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase, uh, four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from Walker Process.
Support.
We have a motion by Care, support by Bartholomew, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Al. We have our cemetery expansion, Romeo retention pond, and RCS. This was an item that we were discussing at our last budget meeting, got off track a bit, so we said, hey, let's put it on our next agenda, so that is where we're at, that's why there's no extra information here. I did sit down with Mr. Clark and ask him, um, maybe not necessarily cemetery-related, but more so retention pond, speaking, um, something that Jamie mentioned with the, uh, the level that they have built up, and at least writing a letter, um, semi-strongly, um, still friendly, acknowledging this concern, so that they at least know that we are concerned about it, asking for their engineering items, um, so we can see what maybe that impact that will have on us, and starting a conversation with them about it.
Yeah, it's a big deal, I mean, you can't, you're not responsible for the natural runoff from your property, right, but you can't modify the existing runoff.
Exactly, yeah.
Usually between property lines, there's a swell between, in order to control the water, but obviously if they've built up the grade so much, that's gone, she's pushing it on us, so, is there anything we can put into writing indicating that that process needs to take some thinking?
Well, my advice would be to have me write a letter to the school, uh, and be firm about it, but not disrespectful or mean spirited, but just, uh, to assert the village's position that, uh, you know you have to accept the natural flow of water, the, the technical terms are, uh, the servient property and the benefited property, and the benefited property is usually the higher ground, so the water runs from the benefited property to the servient property. Well, the natural flow, the servient property, the lower property, uh, cannot, uh, you have to accept the natural flow of that water, but you're not required as the lower property to accept, uh, an unnatural flow of water, and, and the way, and I, I did, after I spoke to Mrs. Posnansky, I did, I took a walk up there this weekend and was, not that what I see, uh, should, uh, carry, cause it doesn't, but I was quite surprised at how, I mean, it was high before, but now it's, you, it's, I'm short, but it's taller than me, and, uh, and so I think it's appropriate for this board to send a letter to the school saying that, uh, we realize we have to accept the natural flow of water, but we do not have to and will not accept, uh, water that is enhanced, uh, by the reconfiguration of the property up there. A, a, a simple example, if I, if I, if I uncorked my water and spilled it, it, well, this would probably absorb it, but if it, if it went off the table, it would spread out, but if I take the same amount of water and blew it through a straw, then the, the effect is far different, and, uh, the result to the property, uh, is far different, and to me it looks like, uh, that, uh, that water will just come cascading off of there and right down into the pond. Now, that gets back to an issue that Mr. Lucero mentioned, uh, if they have an easement, then it's possible legally the village would have to accept that water, but to my knowledge, no easement's been demonstrated by the school, none has been found in the village office, and I think it's wholly appropriate, uh, for the village to just let the school, uh, Romeo Community Schools know what the village's position is with respect to that.
So I guess that my question was, in asking Mr. Clark to write this letter regarding the runoff, did we also want to include a statement in there regarding the easement taking a stance?
The unknown easement?
Well, m- my advice would, uh, would be to assert there is no easement, if they, if they have one, uh, and they produce it, you're gonna have to honor it if it's legitimate, and I'm not saying it wouldn't be, but, but the point is, right now, the assumption has been for many, many years, probably, that, well, the way it's set up, that it must be okay, because that's the way it's always been, and, uh, I, I don't think there's an easement, but again, if there is, that should be incumbent on the school to, uh, produce it.
True. And like I said, now that, with the, with the documents they gave me, originally we were assuming that that might've been an easement for the retention pond, but now with the documents, um, that they provided me, it looks like that easement's for that water main, and not any kind of, like, for the, uh, retention pond, and there's something else worth considering as well, um, to Mark's point, cause we just went through this in the building department, with people that were asking about the northern, uh, parcels at Green Space, because that is over seven degrees pitched, and I, I would venture to guess it's over seven degrees back here, they would have to have some kind of engineer drawings and, uh, civil engineering showing, uh, water displacement that they're not washing us out, and that should've probably, talking to Mr. Bomarito, we probably should've been aware of that, not, not by anything we did wrong, they probably should've said, hey, we are lifting this, and the degree at which this is gonna be lifted, and, and the degree at which it's gonna shed, it's probably gonna cause an issue for you guys, and, I mean, again, I have nothing that speaks to that, so.
And, and even if there is an easement, uh, it's possible, and I'm, I'm not accusing, it's possible that the scope of the easement is, has been exceeded, it would be someone in the nature of, or by way of example, somebody giving an easement for ingress and egress for cars, and then now there are, uh, double, uh, there are, there are trucks with tandem trailers going up and down there. Easements can be not only for the, the, the general purpose, but also, uh, they can be limited, uh, by the specifics, how much water, how much traffic, depending on the nature of the easement, so it's not just the existence of the easement, if, if one does exist and it's been greatly, all, the, the use has been greatly altered, uh, I would say the village would have every right to push back on that as well.
So we're questioning the easement, the grade and runoff, are we also going to look at the land that you speak of, Jamie, that, where the parking is, that we don't have any confirmed?
I thought that's what Mark was just referring to.
I can, you, you, I, I, you lost me there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jamie, you had spoken of the, the parking area that they said that they just acquired and put parking in.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the, the spot, that corner in the, was it the southeast part of that property?
Southeast part of the school.
Yeah, yeah, where they just took over our land, yeah, I, I, I think it's-
The first row parking that abuts the fence.
Yeah. I mean, it goes, that goes all the way to that secondary parking lot in the back, and then they push back. Um, I mean, it's up to you guys, uh, what you guys want Mr. Clark to address, I would address it, but that's up to you guys.
Just wanna put all three of them in the letter?
Put all three.
Sit down and talk about everything at the same time?
Their land.
Okay.
Move it.
Get the full scope of what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move forward in, with that directive. DDA appointments, um, for a while we've had one open seat, uh, included a letter in here, we did receive a resignation from, unfortunately, John over at Main Street Coffee, love that he's expanding and has such a fabulous business, unfortunately, it made him too busy. But we do appreciate his time and all of his efforts, he's always available, so I included that letter for everyone here. In that time, I did receive two applications, one from Karen Murdock, and one from Zachary Throne, both of them are included here. I did, uh, pass on to the DDA the information, asked, uh, Kay, their director, Danielle, the chair, or, excuse me, Andrea, the chair, Danielle, the vice chair, to reach out, see how they're felt about them, and they approved both of them. So with that, I would put both on the floor as appointments to the DDA board.
If I could, real quick, before we start, John, I just wanna thank you for your years on the DDA and how many you contributed, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, John. So there's eight, eight board members on that board?
Um-
How there's supposed to be, nine?
There's eight and then the president.
Well, there's eight and myself, so there's an add number.
Um, but doesn't the majority of the board have to have an ownership or business interest in the DDA district?
I think it says five members have to have an interest in property, which interest would, my understanding would be financially.
I think it's six, not less than at least six.
I think the wording-
You'd have to look at the-
I think the wording is five.
The DDA.
I'm trying to pull it out, but I'm pretty sure it's-
Karen does?
She does, yes.
For sure? And Zach? Well, he might not have stake in it, he does work at a local business, and he is intentional in putting a business in the DDA, just has not found a spot yet.
I'd also like to include Mr. Stevens in the discussion, he has a local interest, he's proved that, you know, he's, he's served on multiple boards and been involved before, so I think he's a great candidate as well.
He was on the DDA board at one time too, I think he chaired-
He's a resident, he had a business over.
With property in the village district, the DDA, DDA district.
No, I understand he didn't fill out a formal application, um-
Well, it's not necessary, but these were the ones that were given to me that I knew about, so.
Isn't, uh, Mrs. Smith, I thought Mrs. Smith gave, Sharon Smith gave the application.
She might've in the past.
Yeah, so the most updating one I've got, Nate, it says not less than five members of the board shall be persons having interest in property located in the downtown district. Not less than five, but Sharon said what's on the website is older than what I-
Which, what are you referencing?
Twenty fifteen.
But what are you ref, what are, what exactly are you referencing?
Twenty fifteen says six, but he has the twenty eighteen that says five.
But what, year of what ido, like?
What website did, was that on?
I know, but what is it referencing? It, it's calling-
The members of the board, you, you have not less than at least-
Are you saying the village ordinance? That's what I meant, like, what are, what are we, okay, thank you. Um, I believe we need-
But now it's five, I mean, he has the most recent one.
Yeah, section ten, fifty-four, board trustees, downtown development-
I don't know, Mr. Clark, would it matter if I am on the board as a president, but I also have, uh, stake downtown, would that count towards the number?
I don't think it would, because I believe the way the ordinance reads, it says shall consist of eight people and the village president, and so I think the focus, uh, of the eight would be on those requirements, because, uh, the, the, I know I'm stating the obvious, the village president would have to live in the village, because you have to be an elector to, to be elected, uh, but, uh, you may not have any interest in property, uh, and so I believe that those limitations or, uh, and they're not even all limitations, but, uh, the fleshing out of those roles would be more appropriate for the, the eight than it would be for the president.
Understood, thank you.
And, and the reason the numbers are different is, there was a period of time, maybe starting in fifteen, could've been a couple of years earlier, where the DDA, well, I shouldn't say the DDA, it's not their fault or responsibility, the village council kept changing the number, and at one time they had an even number, which somewhat or sometimes paralyzed the DDA, because you would have even votes and they couldn't get anything done, so the, the, the number on the board fluctuated, and, uh, I believe the most recent incarnation, uh, is the eight members plus the president to make a board of nine.
So how many on the existing board do not?
I'm writing them down, um, currently, well, now that John is gone, we have four that do have stake, and two that are residents, so by putting Karen on, sh, with the downtown business, she would give us our five, for sure.
Who's the four?
Pardon me?
Who's, what four do you have?
We have Paul Bowers, Marty Hutnick, Kathy, I apologize, and Missy, I don't recall both of their land, Van-
Van Warmer and Haswell.
Thank you, yes.
She's a business owner?
Which one?
Missy.
Yep.
Well, I thought she sold it.
She has items within another business and owns a bit, it would be like if any of those people within MJC, any stall, is a business owner in the downtown.
Okay, so Missy's still on it?
Yep.
And is there any resident within the DDA?
Not that, nope. Oh, you're right, Kathy is, apologize, she lives with, above her business.
That's what I thought, I thought you, you guys discussed that at the last meeting, can recall for sure, so then that meets the, if we have more than a hundred people, that's good.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to, uh, go ahead and accept Karen Murdock?
Second.
And, uh, Tom Stevens?
Support.
Support.
So hold on.
No, I thought we were gonna do one at a time, but-
Oh, do one at a time? Why can't we just do both?
No, I, that's why I supported initially, but, for the one, but I didn't know you were going to, into two.
So do you still have support? Or do you want?
I'll, I'll retract.
Okay, so we have a motion by Edwards for Karen and Tom Stevens, and we have support by, who wants it?
Bartholomew.
Bartholomew.
By Bartholomew, okay. Any more discussion? I would say that I am in favor of Zachary Throne, um, seeing the whole history, that he does work in a downtown business, um, as much as Mr. Stevens would be an asset, that's just my stance. Does anybody else have discussion?
No, they're all very good candidates, so their applications are great.
Yeah.
Okay, Clerk Lucero, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Fowler?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Rossa?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Hasen Posnansky?
No.
Thank you guys. Moving into our joint council and DDA proposed meeting date, this is something that I threw on here, um, I would like to get us back at the table in the same room again, having dis, um, positive discussions, um, so I just threw on a couple of dates for July, if there's anything else, any other dates that work better for somebody, again, these would be at seven o'clock at night here in the meeting room.
Have the DDA seen these yet, or this is the first stuff?
No, this is it, that's, it's gotta start somewhere, and this was our first meeting.
I'm, I'm out on both, I will, I won't even be in town for either one.
I can do either.
Okay.
At this point, I'm available for either.
Okay.
Do you wanna do like the fourteenth with the seventeenth as an alternate, in case the DDA doesn't?
Sure. We'll do that, and we'll pre, take it to the DDA board. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving into our village public safety consideration, uh, the Combe County Sheriff presentation discussion.
I'd like to, like I clarified earlier in my, um, trustee report, put a line through the sheriffs and put dispatch, cause that's what the conversation was, I don't know when, when the sheriffs actually came up as far as talking about replacing our police department, but the dispatch, yes, so put a line through the sheriffs and write dispatch.
The agenda's already been approved.
Well, okay, well, you guys can talk about it all you want, but that was my-
Your proposition is to see if the McCombe County Sheriff wanted to give a presentation on?
On the dispatch.
Dispatch.
Yes.
I did, at your table this evening, you did have, um, some emails, and trying to brush up on the topic, uh, went and looked, I knew we had discussion about it in the past, um, these are not new emails to this board whatsoever, we were all actually included on them back in twenty twenty-three, so, um, just for point of reference, it started with, um, an email from Justin Parker to the board, myself, um, asking to please add McCombe County to the, at that time, November twentieth agenda for a presentation. asking to please add MacCombs County to the, at that time, November twentieth agenda for a presentation on the Comtech, Comtech dispatching system. Board members, please do not reply to this email. President Posniewski, if there's any information you need, Sheriff Wickersham is attached. Sheriff Wickersham, if you can have any information sent ahead of time, so it's in our packets, please touch base with the president. Thank you. Which then was replied to by Mr. Wickersham to all of us. He included Don Brown in on it also. Village of Romeo officials, I would like to clarify the request from you to provide an overview of our dispatch system at your board meeting on eleven twenty twenty-three. If the board is interested in learning more about our dispatching services as it relates to who we dispatch for, equipment and software used, training, et cetera, I have no problem making that presentation. If there is some willingness to move to our dispatch, I hope as a board you would discuss this matter amongst yourselves and include police chief. I just want to make sure that everybody knows why I am there and for what reasons. Thank you for your time and consideration. Please contact me. He left his phone number in that email. To which trustee Parker replied, Sheriff Wickersham, at this time, I feel an overview explaining the benefits and other important topics would be beneficial. Once the board has this information, we can discuss further. I will make sure our police, chief of police and also Bruce Township's fire chief isn't, is invited. Thank you again. I got it. Not invented. To which I also responded, Mr. Wickersham, thank you for reaching out and for your willingness to present to the board. As a big, as a bit of background on the matter, trustee Parker mentioned during his trustee report, God bless you, at the October council meeting, that he had been having conversations with Mr. Don Brown regarding county dispatch and subsequently requested during his report that a presentation be added to the council's November agenda for the county to present on the topic. Per the village council's rules of procedure, council members have the right to request agenda items. To be clear on the steps that the board has taken so far, the Village of Romeo board has not expressed interest, nor has it requested an overview of the county dispatch system. To date, the board has not expressed an interest to move to county dispatch, nor has it engaged Romeo Police Chief in a conversation on this topic. Again, thank you for making sure that this board is clear on your intentions and understanding of the matter. To which Mr. Wickersham replied to myself, but included everybody, thank you for the information. And with that being said, I will not waste my time or yours. If any members would like to tour the center, you're more than welcome to come and we can schedule it. So that is the background of when it was brought up back in twenty twenty-three. It seems that the focus at that time was also dispatch. It also seems that Mr. Wickersham, in order to move forward, he notes if there is some willingness to move to our dispatch. I guess the question would be, does this board even have a willingness to move?
Doesn't hurt for the presentation.
Why have a presentation?
Presentation, doesn't hurt.
If there's no willingness.
That's what we attempted to do before, but you shot it down. All we wanted to do was have the discussion.
Sir, I just read the emails and you, you heard that there was no willingness from the board. There was no movement.
No willingness from the board.
Basically, it was, it was never added to the agenda. It was never a topic. It was never voted on. I know it's something that me and Zach had talked about in the past. I think your email's slightly off. It was more of a conversation with Zach and Mr. Brown that I was privy to some of the comments and information on. I moved forward with Zach. I sent the emails to get a presentation to see what they offer and see where we stand with it. If there's any concern. I mean, that was the time to, to talk. I mean, I know, keep talking about the budget and if it's something we need to look at, to look at and see if it's beneficial.
And someplace down the line, too, like the resident from Bruce Township indicated. Sure, we did attempt to try to do some outreach to Bruce Township, but it never went anywhere. I think if we can keep reaching out farther past our, our own borders here, we might make that happen. So this is an attempt.
Those kind of ideas, Zach, were always, were brought up in the past and Bruce Township always rejected them because they figured we would just come anyways.
Yeah, which, which, that's what we've been doing in the past.
Pretty much was.
Most of our police responded to, because they were there quicker.
Yep.
And then I think, yes, you were part of the conversations. We tried to make that happen.
Well, that's, Bruce Township currently had the county come out and give a presentation. They didn't even ask us for one. So Bruce doesn't, has not asked Romeo Police to come to Bruce. It's not on our hands.
We've done the runs in Bruce Township, and that's what Matt was indicating. And that's why we had those conversations in the past to try to get the township to work with us because I think we were using the sewage, keep our prices down in the sewage as far as our police.
But I'm confused on the conversation. Are we talking, we're now talking police, but the topic is dispatch.
No, I'm just, Matt happened to bring up the past and I'm just filling in the people, how those conversations took place.
We've had a massive overhaul in PD over the last year. How much have we spent on dispatch?
A lot.
So with that, we don't have a number, but we all know it's a lot.
At the very least, about four hundred thousand on the nine-one-one system.
So I understand talking about this prior to investing money, and when we're talking about the budget, this is literally good money after bad. If we're going to sit here and say we're, we've committed to investing for our people to have the right resources, the right systems, and then we're just going to strip it away and look at possibly replacing them, that money is out the door. That is malfeasance as it comes. And I'm sorry, this was never a discussion just about dispatch. You could try to twist it now, but it was always about police. You said it.
And that's a bunch of crap. I don't give a dog a high.
Sir, point of order, point of order, point of order. You're supposed to be respectful.
You don't come out and just automatically say it's.
No, I won't. Would you, would you like me to play the video?
Excuse me, gentlemen. Excuse me. Let's, let's respect each other and not speak over one another. Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was that when I, when I said and started saying all the reasons why it will cost us more to move everything over to MacCombs, I was shut down and told I was just rambling that they were done. This was never just about dispatch. You can, you can act like it is and that's fine, but it wasn't. And, and if you want, we can.
Before you got here, Jamie, it was about dispatch. Now you're here, you're trying, you've got all these people riled up. You must have sat in the office and typed all kind of.
Yeah, that's exactly what I did, Zach, because I have.
Weird stuff, rumors, and you got everybody outside. Yes.
That's all I have to do.
That's all you do, especially with this fifty-five page minute thing that you put out.
God forbid what you say is accurately represented.
Guys, please, I mean.
I, I did not rile anybody up. I am just presenting, I'm just presenting the facts.
Okay, I'm going to take the table back right now. I'm going to take the table back right now and we are going to take a minute. I get that this is heated. I get that these people here are heated also. You can feel it. Let's take a breath. And from here, if we are at this moment talking about dispatch, put everything else aside. You guys want to fight about he said, she said, and other things later, I don't care. But right now we're talking about dispatch if that's where we're at, because that's what I understand it as. From the past email, I'm going to assume that Mr. Wickersham's stance has not changed, that if there is some willingness to move to our dispatch, that's where I'm at. So if this board has a willingness to actually move to the dispatch, then go ahead and make a motion to bring in a presentation.
I'll make a motion to bring a presentation to Combs County to give a presentation on the dispatch system of MacCombs County.
We have a motion from trustee Fowler.
I'll support.
We have support by trustee Parker. Do we have further discussion?
I'm not interested in, I like our local dispatch. I'm not interested in entertaining the presentation. I think it's just a waste of time.
I agree with Nolan. I have no interest in it.
I have a question for chief before. I, I recall you saying some of the equipment, and forgive me because you're the expert. I mean, some of it would be more integrated with other systems within the county? Or you were talking about how we can't communicate. Was that just for like running the license plates and stuff? Or I guess what I'm thinking is some of this new equipment we have, is it possible that it would work in conjunction with what the county has? Could they be integrated? Because I remember you talking a little bit about.
First of all, we just bought into Clemis. Do you know that the Comtech doesn't use Clemis? They use New World, which means you'll have to buy into New World. And we are on a four-year interest-free purchase agreement with Clemis. That's not going anywhere. So you have to buy into a new system.
But that is with, that is not strictly dispatch, though.
What?
Clemis.
Clemis. It's a between.
Sure, but you would still have to buy into New World regardless, because that's the platform that the Comtech uses. They don't use Clemis. They used to, but they don't use it anymore.
So what was it, do you recall that you presented would tie us into something we weren't tied in before? I thought you were talking about like traffic stops.
I believe it is Clemis. It's the larger database, but it's not what MacCombs County uses.
So what is that system called? Like when they do the traffic stops and they're.
Lean?
Trying to find out.
Talk about CAD.
Is that it? I, I'm asking.
We are not on CAD. Clemis had the CAD option, but it was more expensive, so we did not, we did not option for CAD. We are not on CAD. However, if you were to go to Comtech, they are on CAD. We would have to buy into their CAD system with New World.
Okay, so if the officers make a stop today, they have the capability to run someone's plates and know a lot of information and registration and all those types of things beyond just Romeo, correct?
We would now.
With, with Clemis when it came in.
Okay, all right, that's what I was.
They're, they have about two hundred and thirty agencies, including, including Warren, the third largest city in the, in the state is on Clemis.
Yeah, in the past, we did not. It was just whatever information we had gleaned ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Can we talk about dispatch? Let's talk about dispatch, Mr. Fowler. So if you remember when I, when I came in and I gave you the wages presentation, I gave everyone in this packet. And I wonder if how many, how many of you even opened it? Because in this packet, there's a study that I put in the packet in the interest of not reinventing the wheel by now-retired Chief Dave Niedemeyer of the Hazel Park Police Department, also a smaller agency, where he absolutely crushes this concept that consolidation or outsourcing saves you any significant funds. And any money that may be sent saves you at what cost? The resources that you're, you're losing, the services that you're losing, is it worth that? I'll take a quote from his, from his study, which to me completely encapsulates Romeo dispatch. The telecommunications unit dispatch is the brain of every police department. It receives information, processes it, and sends signals to the system to be acted upon. If dispatch operations are run by another entity outside of the village and staffed by personnel that are not familiar with and certainly not responsible to the community receiving the service, a critical link in that chain is broken. Mr. Fowler? I, I've worked in this profession for, since nineteen ninety. I can't tell you the warm feeling you get on a critical incident when you recognize the voice on the other end of that radio. You all saw me leave here tonight, the front half of this meeting. There was a critical incident in Romeo. Again, remind you, it happens here, too. I can't tell you how comforting it is to hear a dispatcher on the other end, who you know, you know their name, they know you. They likely know your story, your family's story, as opposed to somebody in Mount Clemens who I've never met and probably never will meet.
All right, you called my name. I'm glad you did.
Well, you're the one that keeps bringing it up.
You've done, you've done a great job, but we have over one point five million dollar deficit that we have to start.
That is incorrect, sir. We do not have a one point five million dollar deficit.
Then you just go through this thing as far as rule of orders, so.
Yes, and as the chair, I can rule of order you, and I'm letting you know, we do not have a one point five million dollar deficit. You are incorrect.
There's not, there's not going to be a savings.
Thank you.
I remind you, the dispatch in Romeo is not just dispatch. It's really frustrating to hear. They don't just push a button.
There's nothing wrong with having.
Can I finish? Can I finish now?
Oh, okay. We're all doing, doing the free last thing, so why not?
In many communities, such as the one I came from, that's what they do. They dispatch police and fire. That's all they do. They had a records department. They had a FOIA department. In Romeo, they do it all. Dispatchers know their local residents' needs, expectations, and complaints. They know the local problems, laws, and ordinances. Dispatchers answer basic general police questions and Romeo-specific questions. They are the face you see when you walk in the door twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You know what I get in an independent township? Well, we're on an Oakland County Sheriff's contract. When I go there, I got to push a button on the wall, dial central dispatch in Pontiac, and I get a telecommunicator that I've never met and I don't know. They tell me, we'll dispatch a deputy to you. Go ahead and have a seat in your car until they get there. I don't think that this community is accustomed to that, nor do they want it. When they go to the Romeo Police Department, they actually talk to a person who does so much more than just dispatch, police and fire. There is, they're our records keepers. They do all our FOIA. I mean, I can go on and on and on about what our dispatchers do. They're truly a jack of all trades and extremely valuable to this community, and this discussion has been had a number of times. At what point are we going to stop having it and stop doing this to our people? The stress and consternation that you put on these, on these people, when you have this conversation and you open this up, at some point, it's just enough. The facts aren't going to change. This is explained to you in years past, explained to you again. It's not changing. This is a small town police department, and our dispatchers are extremely important to that operation for a whole lot of reasons other than just pushing a button and talking to an officer or a firefighter. I can't stress that enough.
Thank you, chief.
Correct. Even if we did go out for dispatch, you would still need to have other personnel in there. The other personnel in there would require other salary. Would we really in the end save anything on top of all the money that we've just invested? I can't imagine how many years, if we were even saving, it would take to make that back up. I have no more discussion. I know what I would vote. Anybody else? Clerk Lucero, could you call a roll?
Yes. Care?
No.
Bartholomew?
No.
Parker?
No.
Rossa?
No.
Edwards?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
President Posniewski?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, moving on to the next slide. We have item optimization of resources in relation to finances and collaboration between boards. That's a lot.
What is?
I don't know.
That, that came from me. And the first item, energy audit discussion. In thinking about budgeting and saving and everything that we're facing, I know DTE offers energy rebates and that had been done in the past, but if you switch out your lighting and all that good stuff. And although upfront there is a cost, they do specifically spell out for you at what point do you start earning your money back as to what you invested. And so it wasn't anything official. I had a representative who works with DTE in that rebate department come out and meet with me last Friday. We kind of looked at village hall. We looked at police department. And then we went over to wastewater and, yeah, thank you, Dennis was so gracious and gave so much information. He really was a wealth of knowledge and was helpful. And so that representative basically was going, was looking just to see, is this even a worthwhile thing? Should we do an audit? Would it save you money? And in some areas, we were doing pretty well. He said, not really. At DPW, there were some areas that were doing well electrically, some that would make a significant difference if we looked at it. And he said, I think the rebates will eventually get you your money back and, and, you know, we can figure this out. So my, I guess my discussion part was, are we interested in at least pursuing parts of where can we save? What can we do? Where would the rebates? What can we do? Where would the rebates and switching out electric make sense for us from the regular, the halogen to the LED? So if the board's interested, they can come out, they can do an audit.
Is there a fee attached to this?
No. They do the audit, great, yeah.
Go for it, I.
Support.
Yeah, and I thank you for taking the initiative. It's appreciated.
You're welcome. Okay, so then just be aware that I'll be setting off with DTE and they're gonna be coming out. They'll do any physical building that we ask for, and I would probably suggest we include Parks and Rec. Because even though they're managing the building, I mean, who wouldn't wanna save money on electric?
Right.
So Wastewater, DPW, Village Hall, Police Department, Parks and Rec, and if there's any other physical building that we have, even sheds or whatever.
Will they look at the street lighting?
They will look at street lighting. Uh huh. They'll look at whatever. And, and you really, this, you know, when they work with DTE, it's all numbers. So there is no trying to upsell you. It's, are you gonna save or aren't you? When do you get your money back or don't you? So it's very cut and dry, and we don't have to worry about, you know, some, some pitch to get us something. So, yeah, they'll do street lights, they'll do whatever.
It's pretty cool.
Sounds good.
Alright, I'll follow up.
Is that the whole item? Oh, no, you have the, you're welcome.
There'll be another agenda item at the end for public comment.
Function of the boards.
And then function of the boards and discussion, that, that was, um, it, it's a big thought, and trying to pull it together, looking at, watching the board meetings, watching planning, watching DDA, obviously watching our own, being in our own. When I first ran for trustee, my thought was, our village needs a guiding light. Like, what are we? Who are we? And that kind of will help guide us in decisions. It'll help planning, it'll help DDA, it'll help council. A lot of towns have their identity and, and their guiding light. And just hasn't come to fruition. However, when I listen to the other boards, I see planning doing their thing, we're doing our thing, DDA doing their thing. Are we all following the same guiding light? Are we all working as efficiently as we can? There's a little bit of disarray, like atypical stress in every board, in every commission. And so to address that, it starts obviously with the leadership. And can we pick a guiding light or what our town is about? And are we being efficient with our boards? Are we being efficient with our funds? Can we just step back and look at all of this and go, "This is how we've done it for fifty, sixty, seventy years, but is it how we have to keep doing it? What could we do and, and where are we headed?" If that makes sense.
So you're looking for more like collaboration among boards, maybe, like a common, a common light, guiding light?
Or maybe invite, if we're gonna do the village and the DDA meeting, bring in the planning, have all of them?
Yeah, sort of. I mean, I think as a council, if we chose, and, and obviously, it's not, okay, let's pick the slogan and go with it.
It takes a lot of effort.
But if, if we chose, what is this town, town about, and then for generations or years to come, people say, "This is our identity." And then each planning board, each commission, each whoever knows what we're about. And yeah, getting these boards together, these people together, so that we're all on the same page. But also, are we being efficient? The, the tree board is short a couple of people. The DDA needs people.
Not anymore.
Planning has had some of their own issues with their people. So do we need all of this? Are we top-heavy governmentally? Or, or maybe we're not. Maybe we're still in need of more people. Are we efficient with our budgets? Does planning know? And does DDA know? And does the tree board know what we're all doing physically with our funds and what our plan is? And could we be more efficient that way? The tree board is talking with DDA about trees downtown, and that's fabulous. But does everybody know that? Like, could we get more of that kind of stuff going? That will help us in the long run, also maybe save some money and use our funds more efficiently.
No, I agree. And historically, we haven't planned out our budgets. We're, we're finally in the spot with our CIP that we can actually plan out our budget. So now would be the perfect time to have that discussion, to put that in, into fruition. Because historically, we would do single-year budgets. Where are we right now, right here? That's where the one point five million dollar deficit conversation comes from, is that if we were to fully fund the remainder of the roads, then we would have a one point five million dollar deficit. We do not currently have one. And we're able to know that because we finally have a roadmap and we're able to plan out our budget. So I think that's a perfect time.
So are we being as efficient? Does everybody think we're being as efficient as we can with all of the funds and resources available? Both financially and personnel-wise, towards?
To some degree, though, would we need a consultant? I mean, because we may not even know the right questions to ask in regards to what you're asking, what you're saying. So that might be something to think about, too. That's what we did with the roads originally, back when we put all those bids together.
As a village of Romeo, we're done like a State of the Union meeting. We could have chairs of all the boards speak, and we're kinda hitting at that collaboration and, and, you know, lack of communication among boards. We could have a joint, you know, meeting or event like that.
Or with the DDA coming to present, we could ask multiple.
Yeah.
I don't know. But no, we have not, and that's a good suggestion.
Well, I, I appreciate hearing the support and, and kinda thinking about what I'm trying to present. Yes, maybe a consultant would be a good idea, some type of person. I'm, I'm a little hesitant because I have suggested things in the past, time studies and forensic audits, that weren't met with great reception. There was some. But those pieces fit into this. Sometimes you can't see the forest through the trees, and you need someone to help you with that. And so that, maybe that same person can look at
Maybe.
the forest through the trees. But I, oops, I'm sorry. These chairs have to go. I think there's a lot of funds and duplication and bureaucracy that we have going on in our village right now. I think we could do better. That's your house, or I.
Yeah.
At the DDA board, kinda had this discussion also, I think, about better collaboration. I believe Paul spoke on it quite a bit. Yeah, I can see a need definitely for a better one, one mindset or that guiding light or whatever that might be, to kinda keep that focus. And then when this board changes or that board changes and, you know, we've invested so much into certain things, and then it just kinda dwindles away and dies off. Or if we have that continual focus, where this is our end goal, which might be fifteen years down, the CIP and some of that type of stuff, that we can focus on, I, I agree, I like that.
So are you suggesting something as simple, but is not really simple as a motto? A definition? A mission statement? A vision statement? What do, what do we?
All of those. The motto is the end piece. You have to have your mission statement. What is our mission as a town?
You know, it ties into our master plan and our goals and.
I thought there was a mission statement in the master plan somewhere.
Ooh, I can't recall. If that, if that specifically is what you're, to at least pinpoint something, could look at the MML, see what kind of, remember, we had them come out, paid them to come out and explain how to do a CIP? Can poke around, see if there's something for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be a lot more cost-effective, too.
Yeah. And, and it gets everybody working towards the common goal. But I, I'm looking at it both from where we're going, but also, you know, what, what do we have to work with? Because planning affects things financially. We affect things financially. The DDA affects things financially. We all do. And everyone has a different pot of money. The tree board affects financially. And I think there's better ways to use some of this money if we all get on the same page. They're not in your head at Mosaic, is it, about yay, nay?
Oh.
I see you're over there shaking.
I'm good.
You've been quiet.
I'm good.
Okay, well, I can at least take that action on.
Basically, you're talking about a consol-
Pardon me?
A consolidation of all the, of all the sub-boards into basically fewer. There's been fewer boards.
I don't know, is that what you're saying?
I don't think so. I think we wanna go in one direction.
That's something I'm picking up on, because you said the collaboration between all the different boards. Everybody's doing their own thing out there. And you wanna get a hold of basically
I thought you meant more communication.
Yeah, that too. I mean, whatever. It's all connected. I think, um, boards, yeah. Like, okay, for example, and I think maybe, is this what you're getting at? If we come together for a meeting with the DDA, and that it's not needed or necessary or whatever, it's just the example, because that's what's in front of us.
Yep.
But for all of us to come to that meeting that night, then we're all getting seventy-five dollars. And that's fine. It's not, you know, whatever. But if we were functioning more efficiently and collaboratively, that little tiny piece of money wouldn't have to be spent to do that. So it's little things like that, I think, that we could be better at, too. So if, is that kinda what you're thinking, like?
Just, yeah, you hit on it, basically. Bringing everybody together. I think the meeting setup we have for the
I'd forfeit my pay for that evening.
Me too.
And any subsequent special meetings?
So your president pay or your?
Meeting pay.
Meeting.
Meeting pay. So, yeah, I mean, do we need the size of these boards, too? I know we have our ordinances and stuff, and planning commission has, I don't even know, if they have to be eleven. Could we make them nine and still be as efficient? And still work as well? Like, stuff like that, too. Little, you know, little things.
I guess us as ex-officials or liaisons between the boards, we could probably, I could probably come with more information from planning, and maybe we could have more discussion related to what's going on with planning at this meeting. And eliminate extra meetings. Right? The same thing back to planning. You know, more communication back to planning. I can assume, I don't know how many of the planning members are following what's going on with the DDA and stuff there, because, I mean, that kinda overlaps also, and with the tree board and, and different, different.
Cemetery.
Yeah, and all the different things going on. I think more information coming back and forth between the boards at the regular meetings and not so much additional meetings.
It would be nice if some of those boards would come and make presentations, just like the DDA is doing. The cemetery or the tree board, or even just three minutes to say this is, you know, what's new and different.
Cool. So my action steps from this item, I will reach out to MML, see if we can't get some sort of something for mission vision. I can send an email to all the boards to ask if they would like to come at presentation time also.
Great, thank you.
That is what I will do.
Let's try to keep it within this meeting, right? Or a, a planning meeting or something else where it's not additional meetings, right?
No, but they should be invited to the joint DDA meeting that we're gonna do in, in
Oh, in July.
July. But yeah, I see what you're saying.
I mean, we need to start. We need to get there, because until we get there, we do have to have these meetings. Because we can't have communication if we don't get together to communicate. So I do believe once we get there, what you're saying going forward would be appropriate. Well, well, hold on. We have one more public comment unless there's anything else to be said. Okay, you have three minutes at the podium. You may speak on any topic you would like. We have one hour left, so hey, everybody, take three minutes at the podium.
Hello, my name is Kevin Voss. I live at two four seven North Fremont Street. I did not even think any possible way I would be making a public comment. It's the first time I've ever come to a meeting. My wife, wife happened to say at dinner tonight, "Oh, they got a village meeting tonight." I said, "You know what? So instead of TV, I'll maybe go there and see, like, is this any more entertaining?" Well, welcome. Guys did a great job. Okay, but I would like, it did hit a moment with me. We, we originally lived in Romeo in the early eighties, moved away, always said, "We're coming back." The house my wife wanted eventually came for sale. We bought it. And this is for the, not against anybody, the dispatch thing, whatever. But working on my house about six, seven years ago by myself, on blood thinners, I had an accident, and I cut my leg really bad. And the first thing I thought, having known a little bit about Romeo, is, oh my God, the Police Department's only like two blocks away. So I took a sweatshirt, wrapped it up real quick. There's blood spurting out of my leg, okay? It's terrible. And I wrap it up and I jump in the car, and I drive over to the police station and right by the back door. Come in, blood's all over the floor. I'm telling you, those guys were phenomenal, the lady guys were phenomenal. They, within a minute, the Bruce, the fire department was there. They opened it up, they, the police opened it up, spurting everywhere, blood. They close it back up. I'm in an ambulance and heading down to Nineteen Mile Road. And to be honest with you, you know, I came from Clinton Township up here. If the same accident might have happened in Clinton Township, I might not have this opportunity to speak right now. I might have bled out. And those guys, you know, within moments, within a minute, the whole response thing was like phenomenal. So I got a chance to be entertained tonight and accidentally share my story. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to elaborate a little bit. I don't think maybe we did such a great job with explaining what we're doing with the DDA. Shelley, I hear what you're saying with the guiding light, and I guess for us, we see that as the CIP. Everybody's working on this capital improvement project together. Anyways, that's from the DDA perspective. And when we come here and share how we're doing and what the progress is, the hope is that there is some engagement. You share your ideas on, on what we're doing, and if we're moving along how you want us to, then there's nothing to be said. So the strategy and action plan and the wayfinding and action strategy, we have mission statements. We have a return to Romeo campaign that we're doing for the DDA in the downtown, and that's all included in that. I don't know if that speaks to your mission and vision and what you were talking about.
Yeah, not.
Not necessarily?
Similar, very similar, but yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's part of it. I just wanted to clarify, maybe that's a jumping off point. I don't know. I guess my concern with the boards collaborating, I know for the DDA, with our executive director and the chair and co-chair right now, we are participating in all of the meetings, whether we're here physically watching or watching online. We reach out to those boards and have those conversations. So I guess I love the idea of continuing to do that. And I, I just wanna make sure it was clear, the DDA doesn't get paid per meeting. I know it was said we were getting seventy-five. I just wanna make sure, right, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was clear, the DDA does not get paid per meeting.
Not two hundred, we get seventy-five.
Right, but your monthly salary is two hundred?
No, it's one, one twenty-five.
Plus the seventy-five per meeting per month?
If you come to the meeting.
So that would be two hundred if you went to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Zach Throne, one six six Benjamin Street, Romeo, Michigan. Just wanted to say thank you for your time and consideration and my
Just wanted to say thank you for your time and consideration of my application, and I look forward to helping Romeo in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Andrea Saintmore, one seventy Pleasant Street, I'm also the current chair of the DDA. So first, I do wanna welcome Karen and Tom to the new DDA board, so I'm looking forward to working with Karen and with Tom. Again, we've served before, years ago. And I just kinda wanted to speak to this last portion of the meeting. The DDA has begun presenting to this board our plans and goals. I would like to see the village council engage more with our boards. Our boards make a point, or at least the DDA board makes a point to come here to present to you. We do not see village council members at our meetings, um, or engaging with us in what we're doing, um, in the DDA. I understand, and I've been a, a very vocal about the concerns of the finances of the Village of Romeo. Um, and we've had conversations about this before, Shelley and I have. And it, it's concerning to me that the conversations when this village wants to be involved with the DDA only come up when it comes to money. Um, and this is a conversation you and I have had before, and it feels like when the village council wants to be a part of the DDA, it's because they see a dollar sign. Um, there's no effort to be involved with any of the other things. We present month after month, there's never a comment, there's never a question. It's only when you see that there's that money grab, and that's, that's discerning to see. Trustee Parker has referenced the DDA's discussion of collaboration, and I agree, we have had that discussion. That discussion, though, was regarding protecting the DDA legally from as we continue to spend our money and move forward as with the different projects that we talked to you about, that you have the ultimate choice of, of letting those things happen or not. And, and with what happened with the most recent project, as we had to sit here today and have attorneys involved to settle the financial issues. So again, we are looking for your board, um, to support and to commit to our programs and to ask questions along the way, rather than letting the DDA spend money and not being involved. Um, I would like to remind the board that there is a reason that there's different boards, um, and it would be a major misuse of resources to have the council absorb boards. And again, this goes back to that, what seems like a money grab from, from this council to, you know, we're talking about DDA, and that's the only one with the budget. Um, no one's talking about absorbing tree boards, no one's talking about making other ones, it's always the one with the money...
You have thirty seconds.
That this board comes after. Just to reference again what Danielle said, the DDA does not and has never accepted pay for meetings. We are a fully voluntary board, and it would be wonderful to see this board of elected officials support the DDA besides just looking for a, a check to be written. Thank you.
Andrea, let me clarify, I did...
Hold on, I'm sorry, excuse me, excuse me, I'll, I'll control the table, thank you. It's public comment, so we will not, um, speak to that.
I'll catch you later.
And just so we're clear, when I, as the liaison to the DDA board, I also do not get paid for that meeting. Ms. Sandra, three minutes, ma'am.
Sandra Brooks, I live at two fifty-five Muzzy. I'm on the cemetery board, and we don't get anything, no money. It's volunteer that, and I, I complained about the school, Amanda Moore School. The, uh, the street, the people do not stop at that stop sign. And sometime if they see the police, they're gonna go, they don't stop. And they know just when they be there and when not, and they just obey the rules. But I am afraid some child is gonna get hurt. And the most of the people that, that does not stop is the parents. They're going to pick up their children at the school. And on weekends, it's horrible, they just pass through there. I suggest you get a speed hump or get a flashing light or something up there. Somebody's gonna get hurt or killed. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know what else to say. Other than my wife let me know, "You just won, dummy." Cause I wasn't sure, I'll be honest with you. It's, it's a blondish gray here, I have to say. I'm looking forward to being involved in this, because a lot, I'm not sure what everybody would remember from way, way back when, um, people from the community got together, there was several, Sharon Chika, just, I could go down the list of people that worked on this with the Main Street program and what, which, which eventually became, you know, the DDA. And we had a lot of things cooking, I mean, it was really, it was really good. And, um, I'm just looking forward to get back and share some of the ideas we had and some of the things we did, like with a company by the name of Hyatt Palma. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of that. They, we, we spent a good chunk of change for a program that showed us everything about what a small town like this can do. And however it drifted off is, is irrelevant at this point. Um, the one thing I, I, my wife has been texting and my children has been texting, my ten grandchildren, too. There was just some fabulous ideas in that program I think need to be relooked at, and, cause we don't have to pay for it again. Everything from, uh, parking garages to many things, okay? And again, I don't wanna freak anybody out with what I'm just, I've just, this is what they presented. And I, I just, when I texted her, I said, "I gotta find that book." Where, where did we put the book? Do you have the book? Okay, so, no, I'm very, I'm, I'm looking forward very much to get back with you guys and start, you know, looking at some ideas. My wife and I try to do everything we can as, with the DDA, with our property on, it's, it's the building on, across from Sonic Temple with the old barn in the back. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming most people know. And we are always welcome to open it up at no charge, to have events and to put things together.
You have thirty seconds.
Cause we're on Main Street, so, thank you very much. Sorry about the long-winded speech. Hopefully I've gained some points with the boss at home. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, John.
How you doing, once again?
Uh, excuse me, Dave Varco from Bruce. Um, I wanted to make a comment earlier about the lighting in Romeo, so I live in a small community. I love the sodium lights, they get that nice warm glow, but I did check with, um, the township, Bruce Township, and they said that they have a three thousand K, um, maximum, so that we don't produce, have, have so much light pollution. So I literally went around, changed eighteen street light bulbs myself, I did it for four hundred eighty-seven dollars. Pulled out the transformers, put in the new LED bulbs, super cheap, you guys are gonna save a ton of money. You know, we had hundred watt bulbs, watts or watts, now we're down to thirty-six watts. So you guys, that's, that's a good savings for the community. And once again, it's gonna change the look of Romeo, that warm glow, but sometimes you gotta, out with the old and with the new, it'll still look good, but if you guys wanna save money, lighting is where you can save a lot of money. So, and, you know, DTE, they can come out, hopefully they're doing that assessment for free. Okay, great, because you shouldn't have to pay for an assessment, like I said, watts or watts. If you lower the wattage, it's gonna be a lower bill. So, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
My name's Scott Loes, emergency communication specialist at the police department. I'd just like to thank the community and surrounding community for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Trustee Fowler.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Fowler, support by Bartholomew, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed.